Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, November 4th, 2024. I am the Board Chair, Eric Eldridge. The following meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tingsboro Media. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Xfinity and Verizon FiOS, and is a live stream on our website, www.tingsbrowma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through the video on demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio, so declare that now. Seeing none, after instruction from the State Fire Marshal and the Tingsboro Fire Chief, in the event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room and one to my left. With that, I would like to ask all of those who can, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. My computer's rebooting. Fantastic. Um, we'll start with introductions, starting to my left.
Good evening, Jacqueline Schnacker's Executive Assistant.
Good evening, Ron Schneider.
Hi there, Jackie Gilfis.
You also?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay. Good evening, Ron Cohane.
Good evening, Colin Noizel, Town Manager.
Good evening, Catherine Foster, Assistant Town Manager.
Excellent. All right. We start with, um, meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the regular session meeting minutes for October 21st, 2024.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain carries 400. It was great watching the meeting from Aruba, by the way.
Classic.
Mr. Chair, I move that we review, approve, but not release the executive session meeting
minutes for October 21st, 2024.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will be abstaining on this one because of course I did not get to see the executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I abstain. That carries 301. How do we want to do the executive session meeting minutes? Do we want to just list them all off and do them as one?
I have received confirmation from council that you could just make a motion to release the executive session minutes as posted on the agenda.
So moved.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain that carries 400. Citizen in business time. Any citizens wish to speak? Seeing none? We will move on to our regularly scheduled, not adjusted in time, Town Manager Report.
Happy to be back. Thank you. Chief Russell from the Tingsboro Fire Department issued a reminder to the community today that we're still dealing with an elevated fire risk due to low humidity and moderate drought conditions. We've posted on tingsbrowma.gov a list of tips and things that people should avoid for the next week. So the bottom line is residents should avoid all outdoor burning for at least the next week. I think last count, there's something still like 50 fires burning across the Commonwealth. So certainly still very dry out there. The Fire Department will continue to provide updates as necessary. Generally speaking, our police and fire departments respond regularly to reports of fire, but they're more proactively looking specifically on larger parcels of land. We've had a couple between us and Shelmford, small ones along Route 3. So any type of discarded embers or anything that's hot can cause a fire, so just be extra cautious. Not that anybody needs this reminder, but tomorrow is of course the presidential election. And while thousands of Tingsboro residents, I think it's just above 3,000 at this point, have already cast their vote either by mail or through early voting, we are expecting obviously a large turnout tomorrow. I just want to take a minute to remind everyone that the people that you see working at the polls are your neighbors, so treat them with respect, follow the rules, they apply to everybody evenly, and be patient. We undoubtedly all have difference in opinions, but one thing that makes Tingsboro so unique is our deep sense of community. I want to remind folks to treat each other with kindness regardless of how tomorrow night ends, and of course we'll post the results as soon as we have them on the town's website. I also want to give a shout out to our new Town Clerk Jessica Brunel, who spent the last few months working very hard hand in hand with our Board of Registarians, the Town Democratic Committee and the Town Republican Committee to ensure that our election is transparent and smooth. She's had members from both registered organizations as well as just residents at large in the office, watching them do advance deposits and the like. So if people wanted to know how the election works, certainly they had an opportunity here. So a big thank you to her and of course all the poll workers who will have very long days tomorrow, but hopefully not too long. I'm excited to welcome Guy Bastian to our Facilities Division within the Department of Public Works. He started last week in our part-time custodial position, which supports the Center for Active Living in the Police Department. The position has been vacant for quite some time, so we're thrilled to have Guy on board. The most exciting update I have tonight is that our Town Center digital sign is fully installed and connected. We already have a few messages out there. I've driven by about four times today to make sure that it's working correctly. We will only be using the sign to publish government messaging, so that's things from Town Hall, the library and our Center for Active Living. We gave instruction solve our department heads today about how to get messages out, but if you've seen it, the messages are full sentences now as opposed to the code messages that we had to put on those tiny little highway signs. We'll be hosting our second annual all-staff training on Wednesday, December 18th. In order to accommodate this and to allow all staff to attend, Town Hall will have a delayed opening with Town Offices opening at 11:00 AM. This will not impact the Center for Active Living. I expect that this will potentially impact the Tingsboro Public Library, but that decision of course has to be made by the Board of Library Trustees. We got a grant this year, which caused us to, and this year it had to be completed by January 1st. They made the announcement slightly late, so we're playing catch-up, I think last year when you were in September that we'd be doing something in November, but I want to get it out there so that people know Town Hall at the very least will be opening a little bit later that day. I'm excited to share a great lineup of events honoring our veterans this year. As you know, the American Legion finally reopened following the fire. They will host a traditional Veterans Day event on November 11th at 11:00 AM at the Legion. They wanted to do something big this year to celebrate not just Veterans Day, but also their reopening. And so as a part of that, they've assessed an admissions fee to support the program that they're doing. Because there's an admissions fee, it would be unethical for us to use taxpayer money to fund the program, so they're really running it. The town will support it, we'll put messaging out about it. But we will host in conjunction with the Tingsboro Firefighters Association, a Reefs Across America event again on December 14th. Information for both of those will be available shortly on the town's website. The work to extend the fiber network over the bridge to the Norris Road Campus and the new clubhouse on Sherburne Ave is almost complete. Chances are by now you've seen them in action along Kendall Road and Frost Road. And just a reminder that this work was funded by a $200,000 grant from the Commonwealth that our IT Department secured. The 2024 Roads Program Phase 2 is wrapping up. Final paving on Oregon and Nevada took place last week. There are a couple minor punch list items they have to address. I think they'll be in tomorrow, Wednesday, but that'll put a wrap on that project. We're nearly complete the replacement of the Skirbner Road culvert replacement project. That's going to address a serious flooding problem that anybody in that area has encountered anytime we get some substantial rain. The Engineering Department once again received a grant from the Commonwealth to replace, to design two culvert replacements. The grant totaled $370,000 and will replace culverts along Dunstable Road and Red Gate Road, again common flooding areas. I do want to give a shout out to our DPW Superintendent Jacob Zwicker. We've received for these types of projects over the last three or four years in excess of a million dollars, both in a combination of design funding and then construction funding. Oftentimes, we start with the design funding and then we do the construction funding. This is an area of town that probably before, five years ago, we really didn't pay much attention to, and so we have a lot of backlog in terms of culverts, but we've done a really good job under his leadership finding ways to get them fixed when we can. Our Economic Development Director and Town Planner Ben McClure is hard at work, working to ensure that we're a competitive place to open and maintain a business. He's been talking to several local businesses with the hopes of developing interest in a potential Economic Development Advisory Council. He's working with our IT Department and the website vendor to develop a much more attractive and useful page for economic development on tingsbrowma.gov. You've all seen the economic development brochures that we used a state grant to put together. Our hope is that we turn the economic development page into an interactive version of that with links to apply for the various licenses. We've done a lot in Tingsboro to streamline the permitting process. Our office recently went online for liquor licenses, common vic and entertainment. And so there are, aside from a business license, which is next, everything is online, it's all in the same portal. So somebody that's looking to open a business from scratch doesn't have to go through a million different hoops to get their business open. National Grid has implemented a rate increase for the distribution rates. According to National Grid, this is the first distribution rate increase since 2019. Of course, this is different than a supply rate increase, which they see every single year. And the supply rate increases that you'd see from National Grid, town residents on the energy aggregation program are insulated from those because we lock ourselves into three-year contracts. The rate on the distribution increase is approximately 2.8%, which they say results in an average monthly impact on residential uses of just about $6 per month. A copy of a letter that we received highlighting this was included in the Board's correspondence. Anytime they increase their distribution rates, it has to go before the Department of Public Utilities, who makes sure that it's a justified increase. So they included a copy of their order permitting that increase as well. And then finally, as we head into the holiday season, I just wanted to point out two minor scheduling changes for the Town Offices. We'll close Town Hall at 4:00 PM on Wednesday, November 27th. Town Offices, the DPW and the Center for Active Living will close at 2:00 PM on Christmas Eve, Tuesday, December 24th.
Thank you. Kat?
Just two short items. The Tingsboro Board of Health hosted a Rowan Into Recovery Event at Ruler Kingdom. Approximately 50 students attended to celebrate those in recovery and their supporters. A big thanks to our Regional Public Health Specialist Siobhan Lefrenier for her coordination and Ruler Kingdom for their generous donation. The opioid task force met last week to discuss additional opportunities to use the abatement funds from the state settlement. The task force is preparing a community survey informed to gain insight and feedback from the community to help guide future initiatives. We're also looking into a mental health referral service. We've had one in the past, William James Interface, but we're exploring a couple of different options now, being one that the school uses called Care Solus, and as well as a service offered by the state. So stay tuned for more information on that.
Excellent. Thank you for those updates. I will open it up to the Board for questions or comments. Select person Cohane, did you want to go first?
No, nothing for me.
Select person Gilfis.
I'm delighted by the sign. I, that's all. I just love it. I'm so thrilled about it. So nice work, Colin.
And Colin shares that excitement.
And we like the text about it, so it's good. Yeah.
I share the excitement. I noticed it on the way in.
Very good.
Cars, speedery.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, question for you, so number one, the culverts. Jake's doing a fantastic job. I think when I started, that was one of the things that we figured out on the Capitol side was that, oh, we got a lot of these culverts that are going to need work and we didn't have the money for it. And so getting the grants is fantastic. I think it's a big issue. For people that might be on some of those roads, what is the best way for them to be informed? Because I know some people say, oh, I didn't know, and is, can they just sign up for the regular town updates? Or is there another mechanism for those sort of targeted communications? What would be the best way for residents in those areas to be?
Anytime we do a construction project on a roadway, we send out letters and door knockers to every house along the impacted area and ask them if they want to be added to an email list specifically for that project. And so that's the most important way. Certainly, anybody that has questions ahead of us starting construction can call the Department of Public Works. It's the main line extension 159. These two are just final designs, so we're not talking construction yet, but for any construction project we do that involves tearing into the road, we will send a letter to your house and ask if you want to be included. And then those email updates talk about the schedule. If there's a delay in the schedule, if you're going to need to move your car because the road will be completely inaccessible, all of that gets sent directly to people.
Yeah, just things like that. I just figured, and I don't know whether we might want to have a page on the website where people can see what those projects are, and then if they could sign up or subscribe to that email list, that might be something just, because I know there's some people that are looking for the information and they can't find it. There's other people that I think you're going to need to go around and knock on doors and go the old fashioned way. So that, that would be great. Other than that, lots of stuff going on. So hopefully people are going to keep track of your updates, where they get their podcasts and can see what's going on because there is a lot happening. All right. Anything else? Running right into new business? All right. Let's talk. The first item is endorsement of opinion letters by individual board members. Let me start by saying there is a, there was something that was brought to the attention of the Board multiple times, and because of scheduled vacations, not, these were scheduled, we weren't able to address it until today. I had a great vacation, by the way. So thank you for running the meeting in my absence. And while we're going to address that one particular issue, I do want to make sure that it's clear to people that we are not going to have situations where anytime somebody disagrees and has a complaint, that we're going to deal with it in open meeting. Frankly, you know, if there are frivolous allegations, we may make no comment whatsoever. So this, it's not an open forum for everybody to just complain about everything. Normally, we would address these types of situations in executive sessions, but Mr. Schneider said, no, we should be addressing this in open meeting. We're transparent, and I appreciate that. So if we're going to discuss it at all, we should do it in open meeting. So here we are. I know, Mr. Schneider, you made a statement at the last meeting. I didn't know whether you wanted to add anything or further clarify anything or?
No, I don't want to clarify anything. Suffice it to say, in signing that letter, I never realized or I never thought that it would take on the sort of life of its own that it has. You know, my feelings on that letter, it's a humanitarian issue. It shouldn't have been a political issue, but it has quickly become one. Further, I would like to apologize to this Board if, in having to deal with this, we've had distracted it all from the important work that this Board does. So my humble apology to this Board, but otherwise I have nothing further to add, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'll open it up to two of you. I know Mr. Cohane made a statement last time. I didn't know whether you wanted to?
Yeah, that was a long statement. The same one. I like to make things a little brief, but you know, everybody has a right to their own opinion. The Constitution gives us freedom of speech, and that's really what this was. You know, our lawyer confirmed that that's all this was. I didn't have to ask the lawyer to know that. It's not the first time this has been brought up that select people can have their own opinions. And as I said, it's not the first time this has been brought up. So you know, I already knew what the lawyer was going to say. You know, it's really too bad. It's gotten to this point. And you know, as stated, you know, we each have a right to our own opinions, and all he did was sign it as a member of the Board. That was it. And nowhere in that letter did it discuss that he, that was the opinion of this Board. So it's very clear, very concise, as this isn't an issue, and that's all I'll say for this moment.
Thank you. Select person Gilfis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think it's interesting. I think I have a, quite a different experience than select person Cohane because in you saying that you knew exactly what council was going to say because this has happened before, this is the first time I've experienced anything like this. So this certainly was, I think, a good learning opportunity for me. I'm glad to see the way that it has unfolded and the way that we've engaged with residents and the way that we've engaged with each other and the way that we've, you know, engaged with council. So I might not say that I'm glad that this happened, but I'm glad that it's happened in this sense. I also think that it's, it's been helpful for me because I think that if I were in Ron's shoes, I would have likely done the same thing and not thought anything of it. And I think something that was very important to me when I decided to run for this office is I think it's really important for us to remain politically neutral, even if we have our own values and opinions and the ways that we vote, and we're certainly in the heat of that this week, right? But I know that when we're representing the town at Select Board, that that's not a factor. But that being said, I think that if someone had asked me to sign that petition, I would have signed in favor, and I think not with the intent of representing the Select Board. I think signing it as Jackie Gilfis, member of the Select Board is a reality, right? Like, it doesn't change the fact that I am a member of the Select Board. That's just a statement of fact. So if that's how it was conveyed on the petition, I think it probably would have come out exactly the same way. So yeah, I think there's not much else to say. I, here we are.
Thank you. I appreciate that perspective. I really do. So, I mean, I know when Mr. Schneider was thinking about running for the Select Board, he had some concerns about whether he would have time to still focus in on the work that he does with his church. Mr. Schneider doesn't just talk about helping people. He does it and has been doing it for a long time, and I admire that. With all that said, you know, he's a great guy, but with all that said, if, if there was something that was done that was improper, I would hold you accountable, and I know that you would hold me accountable. And I, I think that's the type of Board that we have. Now, as stated by council, this is a First Amendment issue. You have the right to voice your opinion. And so long as you, you're not speaking for the Board and you didn't have that intent, and I think that that's painfully obvious that that was not the intent, nor in practice was that what was happening. However, if there was something in that letter, if one of us had said something that was, you know, reprehensible or something that was not appropriate, I would, we would call that out. With that said, there is nothing in that letter, and in fact, there were some people that spoke up here that I spoke with afterwards, and I said, hey, did you read the letter? And they hadn't. And that's very unfortunate. A lot of people, they read information from, you know, Twitter or X or whatever it's called this week, or some other site, and they get riled up about things where somebody has said that certain things were said, and they don't even look at the actual source of the information. And the reality is, there is nothing in that letter, like you were saying, that I have any problem with. The reality is, it was not talking about anything relating to illegal immigrants. It was about the US rap, about refugees, which is a legal program, has been since 1980. And it wasn't a matter of saying, hey, bring them all in. It was a letter to the President saying, look, you control how many people come in, and it's great that we're doing, it's a great program, but you need to fund it. We can't, we talk about with the state and the federal government with unfunded mandates. That's what the letter said. It said, you know what? Refugees, legal immigrants are a big part of the United States. It's what we were founded on. But we can't just, it needs to be planned out, and there needs to be more. So there is nothing in that letter that I have a problem with, and like you, I would have said, geez, yeah, I agree. So not, not only do I, do I think that there was no issue here, personally, it sounds like we'd be in favor of a motion. I'd be entertaining a motion that says, this is a non-issue, and that not only do we take no action, we actually support what was, what Mr. Schneider did. So I would entertain a motion towards that end, that we support what was done and that there's no violation of anything, and that in fact, we support his, his action of using his First Amendment rights.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move, the motion I really want to make is there's no impropriety by signing the letter, and we support select person Schneider and his freedom to speak, freedom of speech, and the Select Board take no action.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 301. Matter is closed, and you don't have to feel sorry for that, by the way. That was not your doing, so. Now, let's move on. Let's talk about the American Legion Post 247 Fee Waiver Request.
Turn it over to Jackie.
Mr. Chair, included in your packet this evening is a letter from Jim Lawler of the Robert D. Pelletier American Legion Post 247, requesting a one-year waiver of their automatic amusement license fee. As you are aware, the Legion experienced a three-alarm fire back in March of 2022. The Legion has been closed since in order to repair this damage. They anticipated, and I believe did, open in October of this year. The annual cost of the five automatic amusement devices for the American Legion amounts to $500. This waiver would only be for the calendar year 2025, and they currently also have a common victory license, weekday and Sunday entertainment licenses, and an all alcohol license, which are not part of the waiver request.
Okay. I'll open it up for questions from the Board. Any, any questions?
I meant to look this up. Could you tell me what an automatic amusement license is?
It is basically any device that's coin or token operated, that moves Ski Ball, Pinball, that type of thing.
I've never been to the American Legion building, and it feels like maybe I should check it out.
You're gonna, you're gonna have a chance very soon.
Next Monday.
Yeah.
Next Monday, right?
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Other questions? I'll entertain a motion then.
Chair, I move the Select Board waive the $500 automatic amusement devices renewal fee for the calendar year 2025 for the Robert D. Pelletier American Legion Post 247 located at 90 Pawtucket Boulevard.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries 400. HCA approval, Bada Bloom LLC.
Mr. Chair, this is one the Board will be very familiar with. Once again, as Bada Bloom is going through the Cannabis Commission's renewal process, the Cannabis Control Commission requires that the HCAs that we had in place, which all of, all of which were complying with the law, simply be modified to appear in their green, black and white template. This is no different. There's nothing new here except for there is an addendum, which you won't see on any other agreements so far, which comes directly from our attorney just outlining the odor control that they're required to put in place. One of the weird things about the Cannabis Control Commission's new template is that it only allows you to modify certain pieces of the document, and it doesn't allow you to add additional regulations, even though the law permits it. So they have to appear as an addendum, which is why this looks different than the rest. Aside from this, all the terms in here are the exact same that you issued to them when you gave them their first host community agreement. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the HCA as presented.
So this is just a reorganization of the document. The term, the material terms and conditions are the same. Questions, comments from the Board? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I move that we approve the HCA for Bada Bloom LLC as presented.
Second, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain that carries 400. Okay. Now, HCA approval for Bada Vroom.
Yes. You remember Bada Vroom very well because they were here at your last meeting seeking an extension on the timeline to begin operating. But in order to send the amendment into the state, we have to again put it into their correct template. So this template mirrors exactly the same one that you had for Bada Vroom last week, except that now includes the two-year extension that you granted. So again, I'd be looking for a motion to So again, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the HCA with Bada Vroom as presented.
I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Vada Vroom LLC as presented.
Second.
Out of discussion?
Yes.
There is a minor typo in the form. Yep.
Well, I.
Are you seeing the same one, the address?
I don't know which one you're saying. There's, there may be more than one, so if you.
I love that, the page. On page 11, where the address of the company is written. This is very minor, but.
Streedom, that's the new thing they do in Natick.
Yeah.
Streedoms?
Okay, we'll make that edit. Well, they'll have, because it's their document, but.
Yeah, it looks like it was just a comma gone wrong.
Thank you.
Did you notice any others?
I have a question, yes, Mr. Chair. And on the HCA for Bada Bloom LLC, in their, in their community agreement, it's Bada Bloom Inc. It doesn't say LLC. I don't know if that's just a, if that means anything at all. Or if that's, so in this, in the prior one, the Bada Bloom, we've approved Bada Bloom LLC. The agreement says Bada Bloom Inc.
I will double check with them which one's correct.
Whatever their legal name.
Yeah, right. That's my point, yep.
And that would be like a Scrivener-type thing.
Yeah.
So we can, we could approve it.
Yeah.
Once he does that.
Thank you.
Other? Other questions on this one?
I didn't catch this one, but this same, this same M comma is also on the other HCA.
Very good.
We got the eagle eyes tonight. We got you.
Sticklers for DPO.
Yes.
Well, you, well, the cannabis, two attorneys, so.
Well, the Cannabis Control Commission, who knows what they're gonna come back with, so you might as well get it.
Perfect.
I also want to challenge the Bryant's lane, but I'm not gonna go down that road.
Jackie would be very happy if it was Bryant's.
You, you want it to be possessive?
No, just with an S.
Oh my God, so it's plural. It's even worse. Oy. We'll handle that in another meeting. We'll post it on the agenda. I'm not going out of turn here.
Okay, so, any further discussion on this one? I do have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries four zero zero. Let's talk public safety. I asked Colin to put this on here. We had gone through multiple things. I'm not taking away any of your thunder, am I? Just setting the stage, because we said, okay, we don't want it to just sit there and die. We gotta do something. So let's, let's start the process. Let's figure out where we are in some of this. So obviously, the big question that we were starting with is, all right, what do we have for land? And then there's gonna be some other questions that this comes down to, and I think we need to give Colin a little bit of guidance, and we're gonna have to talk through how we want to approach this one. Because it's not a, it's not a quick one. This is something that's gonna take a little bit of time, and we're gonna have to figure out how we want to approach it. So with that, Colin, I will let you take it away.
Thank you, thank you. Just a little bit of background. In October of 2020, the Select Board commissioned the Public Safety Building Study Committee, which among other things was tasked with comparing the relative advantages, disadvantages, and associated costs of a renovation or addition versus new construction for each facility separately, as well as in a combined facility. They were tasked with making a final recommendation on building renovation or construction options, including recommended location or locations. And they were to review and make recommendation on potential timelines and funding sources. In December of 2022, that committee issued its final report to the Select Board, which took into consideration that between when they were commissioned and when they issued their final report, ten meeting approved an 80 mil, well, $54 million borrowing for the middle school. So what came out of their report, amongst other things, including analyses of different locations, was a recommendation that the Select Board start by working to identify and acquire parcels that could accommodate a combined public safety building or parcels that can accommodate single buildings, depending on the direction of the board. In September of this year, the Board received a final report from La Valley Brenzinger, which accomplished two things. First, it determined that there exists no ability to build in addition to do anything with the current site for the Police Department at 20 Westford Road. It also determined that while there are options, they are very limited and not advantageous options to do some level of remodeling or an addition at the current site of the Fire Department. The second part of that is it highlighted the dramatic disparity between their existing sizes and where they should be, and we saw that that was even more dramatic on the Fire Department side. And it compiled the comprehensive building maintenance plan that we'll use as a part of our capital planning process for the fiscal 25, 26 capital plan. When we talk about the public safety building, and Mr. Eldridge highlighted a little bit of this, there are a lot of considerations that I'm looking for guidance from the board, whether it's tonight or it's a continuing conversation to November 18th. One is thinking about what funding exists for acquisition, if that's the route we go, and then also for construction. Funding sources, while there are some larger communities that may be able to leverage a dramatic amount of free cash, generally, we're certifying less than $1 million of free cash a year. Up to $400,000 of that every year is used in capital appropriations, and you don't really want to deplete the remaining free cash, so that becomes less of an option. And of course, there's debt service. Excluded debt is taxed right now, if you will, because of the new middle school, roughly $54 million. There's also an approach. While there are certainly advantages to doing a combined public safety building, given our current financial situation, that may not be financially feasible, but also it is more financially efficient if you do in the long run, if you're gonna build two new buildings to build a combined public safety building. And then if you decide that you can't afford to do both right now, you're gonna do them standalones. And if you come up with a priority for which building comes first, the next decision is, well, are they gonna be co-located eventually? So are we looking for a parcel of land that can accommodate just one? Or should we be identifying a parcel of land that can fit both? And maybe we're only building one now, and then we're building it down the road, the next one. And then the size of the site that we need. And remember, when we talk about the size, we're talking about buildable land. There's a lot of parcels in town that are much bigger than this, that the town owns, but the actual amount of buildable land is far less less favorable. And when it comes specifically to our fire station, that has to be within a certain radius of the town center, because these aren't vehicles that are out patrolling. They've got to respond from a central location. So for a standalone fire station, you need about 1.67 acres of buildable land. This was a number that originally came from our Tecton report, which was in 2018, but was confirmed by the La Valley Brenzinger report just in September. For a standalone police station, you're looking at one and a half acres of buildable land, again confirmed by our La Valley Brenzinger report. And if you're gonna do a combined building, you need 3.07 acres of buildable land. Site options. These are sites that were recommended by the Public Safety Building Study Committee. I did include in your packet, which was posted online, the final report, which does a deep analysis into a bunch of different parcels. But the two that they recommended, 180 Middlesex Road, that's land owned by the Academy of Notre Dame. It's not owned by the town. At the time, the committee estimated that it would cost about $950,000 to purchase a portion of the land suitable for a combined building. It certainly could accommodate a combined building, and it could accommodate standalone buildings if we were to build one building first, and then 10 or 15 years down the road, be able to build a second one. The location is within the radius that the Fire Department needs to be in. Police have a lot more flexibility, right? Because they're out patrolling, so they don't need to be in a centralized location, but certainly, they would prefer to be in one. I will say that this was something that we had talked to attorneys representing the sisters that run the Academy of Notre Dame. The last time my predecessor spoke to the attorneys, they had put that conversation on hold because the school was reassessing their capital needs. And I think the committee heard some concerns from parents at the school about putting a police station on the same parcel. So I think that stalled things. We've made a few attempts to get back in touch with the attorneys representing the sisters with no success. So I'm not even sure if that is still an option today. The committee also recommended 282 Middlesex Road. It's currently part of a private residential lot. It isn't owned by the town. Due to its location and the fact that it's a residential parcel, the cost would be higher than $1 million, was what the committee estimated back in 2022. Even if subdivided away from the part of the property where the house is, my understanding is the conversations that the town had with the property owner, or that she wanted to keep the house, didn't necessarily need all the land. And if you're familiar with that area, there's a map in the packet. It abuts the Winslow School parcel, unlike the south Mr. Lee corner. So if it was subdivided, there is 3.6 acres of largely buildable land that could accommodate a combined building. However, because you need setbacks from certain buildings, if we were doing standalone, we would need much more than the 3.07 acres for a combined building in order to accommodate driveways, parking spots, et cetera. So it could not, I don't believe, accommodate standalone buildings. Other site possibilities that were reviewed by the committee that could work, but were not recommended as part of the final report, is the 250 Middlesex Road parcel. As many of you know, that houses, well, right now, actually, it only houses the Winslow School, because we subdivided at 252, is the Littlefield Library. That site could accommodate a standalone building, but it could not accommodate a combined building. Limitations of the site include the fact that the adjacent parcel, also owned by the town, 252, has Littlefield Library, which has a state preservation restriction. It can't be moved. I will regret bringing this up, but there is, the Winslow School sits there, and whether you tear down the Winslow School and build a new building, or you use part of the Winslow School in a future building, those are considerations that could be made as well. So when we talk about the cost considerations, I did some very, I simplified the inflationary numbers here. I'm sure that this is not a perfect science, but I wanted you to see kind of a visual. In 2019, the estimate from Tecton Architects was that it would be about $13.9 million to build a standalone fire department and $13.6 million to build a standalone police department. Using a, again, very averaged out yearly inflation rate of 3.5%, we'd be looking at $16.5 million for a standalone fire station today, and for a standalone police station, $16.1 million. This is construction costs, not land acquisition costs. A combined building, which you can see, obviously, there is some economic savings here, would be about $27.1 million. There are all kinds of in-betweens here. Like I mentioned, potentially using part of the Winslow School as office space for a fire station or a police station, where that number would come down. One of the things that I'm looking forward to is on Wednesday, we're opening bids on the pre-engineered steel building for the DPW. And while there may be some differences in this, the breakdown of that building between what is office space in the DPW versus what would be garage or living space in the fire station, we will have probably the most accurate per square foot dollar amount that we've ever had on these types of buildings. We've looked at at least one neighboring community that took an existing building. In their case, it was a mason, a masonry frame, and they used that for office space, limited living space, and they used a pre-engineered steel building for the garage bays, a training center, and I think an emergency operations center. So it is happening in other communities, and something like this could work on a parcel we already own, 250 Middlesex Road, as an example. It's less advantageous for a police department. In the police department, we're not really looking for garage bays, if you will. Those are purely offices, secure holding areas, et cetera. So my questions for the board to help guide a path forward, which again, we don't necessarily need to answer all of them tonight, but I can't really move forward until I get a clear understanding from the board, is what is the path forward? Are we working toward a combined public safety building? Or are we doing standalone buildings constructed in phases? I feel comfortable sitting here today saying that while, of course, we could go for a debt exclusion to fund a $28 million public safety building, the taxpayers of Tinsborough probably can't afford it, and our debt service couldn't support to offset in the way that we're offsetting middle school. Could we start planning today for in the next five years, let's say, not a hard number, building one of those buildings at $16.7 or $16.8 million? Sure. Will there be an impact on taxpayers? Undoubtedly. But would it be minimal compared to a combined public safety building? Yes, but I would like to know how the board sees that moving forward. If we are constructing standalone buildings, the board will have to make the tough decision about which building comes first. There's no denying that the police and fire departments both need, at some point in the future, new buildings. I think what stuck out from the Tecton report for me was not just the undersize of the fire station, but the life, safety, and health issues in there. Right now, just to reiterate it, there are no separations in our current fire station between hot zones, where a firefighter comes back from a call, can decontaminate before going into a cold zone, living areas, office space. In our current building, the setup doesn't allow it. It's all a hot zone, which of course, is an occupational risk. For that reason, I would say that a fire station should be a priority, but that's a decision for the board to make. And then if we're conducting standalone buildings, I got a lot of questions for you. Do you want them to be on the same parcel or not? I don't know that it's really possible, parcelable. Minus potentially purchasing land from the Academy of Notre Dame. We don't own a piece of land centrally located that can fit both. And then finally, if the board says, forget standalone buildings, in the long run, it's more financially responsible for us to build a combined public safety building, is the board prepared to purchase land? And if so, what would we seek as the funding mechanism? So I think based on general feedback tonight, I would plan to put together a high-level proposal for the board to tweak, perhaps at your November 18th or first December meeting. And certainly, as we get further into these questions, we'd bring in the public safety chiefs to be a part of that conversation. But I thought that this was a important conversation to kick off, so I can get a feeling for what the board is looking for, and then really refine my efforts. Every time I tried thinking, well, how are we moving on this front? I just kept coming back to, well, what does the board want? What is, what is the priority? So those are my questions. Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to you to solicit the feedback.
Yeah, so I know, Mr. Cohane, you were on the, the Public Safety Committee. Why don't you start us off? Because a lot of stuff to unpack there, and I know I don't have enough info to answer those questions.
Yeah, there's a lot to. Colin said, I mean, clearly, we're not gonna get there today. But just to kind of give a little bit of the history of, of, you know, the Public Safety Committee, went through a lot of different iterations, many the same that Colin was just trying to, starting to describe today. And went around quite a few circles, actually. The first proposal, I think we spent $50,000 to try to make the Winslow School into a town hall. Tried to make this building into a police department. Had to build a new library, and had to build a new, there's one more building we had to build, so there's at least four. You know, library, police, fire, and town hall, which came out to a ridiculous dollar amount, which, which it was, it would have cost, I think it was in excess of $50 million back then. So you're talking about $70 million now, and the whole plan, honestly, it kind of got kicked off before I got on the committee. I thought it was a plan that would never work, and clearly, it didn't work. So then, I believe the committee really believed that doing a combined building would make the most sense, would save money in the long term. And just as they were starting to get to that point, the new school came on board. And then we realized that there was no way we could do both. The school, and of course, the state was gonna fund the school, so we had to go to that, you know, had to move forward with the school. At that point, we thought it was best to not discuss this anymore, because we needed to figure out what exactly was gonna happen with the school. So now we understand what's going on with the school. And, you know, as Colin said, I think it's, it's critical that we, we start addressing this. And although I wasn't at the meeting with the fire chief, I did listen to the meeting. And there's a few things that he said there that I'd like to repeat at this meeting. I tried to write it down word for word, but I missed it, but I think I got the, the concepts of it. You know, he's, he stated that in 2014, 2018, there was a very similar analysis that decades, you know, and with decades of critical need, really, nothing has happened. His biggest concern is the fire, the fire facility does not meet the basic health and safety need of the firefighters. Again, does not meet the basic health and safety need of the firefighters. And we should consider this a fire, a crisis for our firefighters, and identify this as a crisis to be able to move forward. So I, I'm, I have always been of the belief that, you know, we should look at, you know, a public safety building, but the fire station has, to me, has always been the critical need. Just exactly what the fire chief said. I've talked to the fire chief many times over the years, before we had a town manager, since he reported us. But, you know, he's always mentioned this, and I've gone through that fire station. To be clear, that fire station is a garage that we made into a fire station. We didn't make it, it's, and we added another garage next to it to make it two garages, and now it's really, that's our fire station. So there is a basic need, and it does come down to safety of the firefighters. And that we need to, I believe. And that we need to, I believe, do a deeper dive and to start looking at something at a minimum for the, for a fire station. As Colin mentioned, you know, when we, when we looked at the DPW, I remember calling Matt and going, an aluminum building, like, why, why can't we do that for the fire station? And I remember Matt telling me, Colin and I just had that conversation this morning. We thought the same thing. We should look into this. And since then, we looked into, there are different fire departments that have, to have built aluminum buildings to reduce costs. So an aluminum building will reduce the brick and mortar costs of, of a regular fire station significantly. And with that, there won't be the combined, the combined building, you won't have the cost savings to that. You, you, you know, if you build both at the same time, there's supposed to be this, this incredible cost savings. If you make an aluminum building, that goes away. So I'm under the impression too, that I would like to at least look at a fire station. Look at aluminum building, look at different options. Maybe even create a working group to do a deeper dive, working with Colin and the, the fire chief. Just a working group over maybe just like a couple of months or something. And then come back to the board with another level of detail so we can decide if we should continue down that path or, or, or change paths. Now, there's a lot of other things that, you know, Colin mentioned. We've got the debt service, you know. And another reason for this, the combined public safety building, although Colin did, you know, 27 million here. Pepperell is, is also, also proposed a public safety building. I think by the, the same consultants or it had a lot of the same details of the consultant that we had. And I think the last estimate they had was $35 million to build that. So just to put it in perspective for everybody out there, that, that would be, if, if we borrowed all that money, that would be a 7% tax increase. I just don't think that's going to fly, which is the reason that we, the Public Safety Building Committee wants, we're going to do the school. We said, we just got to shut this down because we can't do a big, you know, another big, you know, building like that and, you know, increase taxes by that much. I believe there's, you know, let's get to the next level of detail with this aluminum building. I mean, the DPW, it's, you know, it's surprising how much, you know, the, the price goes down. I think we should look at that. I have mentioned it to the fire chief one time, just one time. So, you know, he obviously can change his mind. Says, I want a new fire station, you know, as long as it's functional, that, that's really what I'm looking for. Of course, you know, we'll give him another chance to, you know, once we dig into the details. But I wouldn't mind, because there are so many issues and, you know, Colin mentioned a few more there. Also that we, you know, we do need to look into, but I think a working group would be the best way to try to move the ball forward a little bit. And then very quickly come back to the board and see what they, what, what the, what the full board wants to do. Continue down that path or backtrack. You know, maybe we have another big committee after that, you know, there's lots of options we could do. But the proposal really would be to create a small working group over a short period of time to get to the next level of detail. Answer a lot of the multiple questions that Colin has.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate the, um, the background, the history and, and just some of the new ways of looking at the same problem. Because we, we have been looking at this for a long time. Not, not all of us, but the town has been looking at this for a while and, and we haven't done anything with it. So select person Gilfis thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. That was so helpful to get that context. Some of the things that I had noted down as I was looking through this were things that you just answered, so appreciate that. I'm curious, if anyone knows, is there a benefit to the combined public safety building besides the actual startup costs of construction?
Well, when, when we went, we went through the details of combining a fire and police department, you know, the, the things that they mentioned, you know, to, to help reduce the cost was to have, you know, you'd, you'd want a training facility within there. The fire and police would both want a training facility, so that would be combined. Things like, I, I believe, like the workout area, you know, that could have been combined. So there's a few things that can be combined. So that was one of the reasons why they were talking, we were going down the path of a combined fire and police station.
Okay. Yeah, I think I certainly, I was not a part of the Public Safety Building Committee, but anything that I have heard, it's very clear that this is something that the town feels very strongly about, rightfully. It does sound like there's some urgency for the fire department to be addressed. Now, whether that's a standalone or combined, I don't know that we have the answer to that, but it, it does seem like we need to give priority to fire over a standalone police department. Sorry, to the police, if you're watching this. So I think figuring that out would be really valuable. And just thinking about my own experience being on the Winslow School Committee and the sort of the visioning that the town had done. People really like the idea of us building up our town center and having sort of a, a more traditionally picturesque New England town center. And so I think that that's something that we'll certainly want to take into consideration. I do like the idea of having it at Notre Dame. And I don't know how we sort that out. Like, you know, obviously, they need to be willing to sell us the land, but I think that that's a really lovely location and could be really great for the town. Yeah, I think there's a lot to unpack. So thank you, Colin, for putting this together.
Mr. Chair. So I mean, I, I fully agree with Mr. Cohen. We, we need to have a, another group that looks at this, put over a short period of time and gets us focused. You know, I, I hear what, with, what select person Gilf is saying about, we would love to have this historic town center and, and locate the, the fire and or police somewhere outside of that. But are we willing to pay for that? Right? Because there's a, there's a cost for not using the town center. And, and, you know, the way I look at it, we've got this piece of land, we've got where the Winslow School sits. There's all that, that, that dip behind there that if ostensibly, if you could fill that in, it's a big piece of land. And, and we own it, right? So, you know, the cost of acquiring, even if Notre Dame were to entertain us speaking about buying some land, the cost is not insignificant, right? It's, it's, it's a lot of money. I would, I would much rather lean towards something that we already own and figure out a way that we can do that. But, you know, once again, you know, the, the townsfolk, we're going to have to weigh in. How, how important is that character of the center of town? And how far does that have to extend? That we, that we want to keep it versus using something that the town already owns. You know, I agree fully that, that, you know, it sounds like the, the fire station is a, a, a priority. I think that the thing that we can't do is punt this for another several years while we think about it. Because like, you know, Colin said earlier, you know, a decade has gone by from when they've done a study to, to the last study. Can't wait another decade, right? That, that's, 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 we'll have, we'll have to figure out some way to, to, to fund it. It's not going to be pretty. It's going to cost money. But by the same token, this is our, you know, we're talking about the safety of our town and the safety of our firefighters and police. And I don't think you can put a price on that. So, you know, I would, I would like to be part of that committee. I, I think that's, it's, to me, it's, we're at a crisis at that point where, you know, as the chief is saying, we need to do something. I'd love to hear, I'd love to look at the aluminum building scenario and see if that fits. And, and maybe that, you know, allows us to address it more quickly and more economically feasibly. I, I think if we can do that, that's a win-win, you know?
And a point of clarification, if I may?
Yes.
I don't disagree. I think that we can use the center of town. I think that the Winslow School actually would be a fine location for it. I think it would just need to be taken into consideration, like from a design aesthetic perspective.
Of course.
And the town seemed to speak favorably about the idea of potentially using either the land or even the building for Winslow and repurposing it for one of these many options, whether it's the town hall, whether it's public safety and doing that sort of, you know, shell game between them.
When I think of the center of town, you know, if you go through the center of Westford, they were able to use part of their building, make it a police station, there's a fire station. It's in the center of town, but it still is, is, it's an attractive building, you know? You can do it and, and preserve both.
Mr. Chair, is there one more thing?
Sure.
You're, you're talking about a location. So the fire chief, it really has made it very clear, and I think you had mentioned it earlier. He wants to be as close to the bridge as possible because that, that's the bottleneck. And the only, the, the parcel that's closest to that is the one that we actually own, which is the Winslow School. When we were talking about the, you know, the, the, the other school and, you know, it's out Westford Road a little bit. I mean, it was okay, but his preference would be closer to the bridge than the back. So I just wanted to mention that so everybody is aware of that.
Didn't the committee say that the Winslow site was not a good location?
So.
You want to say that? Go ahead.
The Winslow, it was definitely not a good location for both. It assumed that the full, I'm digging myself in here. I'm going to hate mail tomorrow. If you don't.
I'll take it.
Incorporate, if you don't incorporate part of the Winslow School into a new building, the only way the site works is if the Winslow School is not in the way. However, it certainly is possible if the footprint of the Winslow School is smaller and or incorporated in some combination with the building. And to Mr. Schneider's point, certainly you can fill that backside of the parcel so that you're extending backwards. And, and to play out the scenario, from the front, you would still have the historic New England town with the Winslow School visible, but you'd have the functional fire department in the back. Hypothetically speaking, I'm not proposing anything.
Yeah.
The hate mail that you receive tomorrow will be her mate's.
Excellent. Thank you.
So what I'm hearing, and I appreciate the discussion. That was kind of what, I was in that same thing because we were like, okay, we have to talk about it, right? It, it's not pretty.
Right.
It's not going to be fun, right? But we can't do nothing, that that's not an option. And I think we need to, we need to look at all the options that are there. I think that I certainly, I, I'm not, while I certainly sit there and say, okay, fire appears to have the, the, the largest need. I want to make sure that we're thinking about public safety and both. And, and we, we need a comprehensive plan for this because it's not just locations. I think that the biggest challenge is going to be money. And we need to have a plan. And it's not going to be, I don't want to go to the town with, okay, I need $20 million for this building. And then it doesn't address, you know, the other public safety portion of it. And then I'm going to sit there and come back again. I'd rather let them know what the vision is. We really need to have a vision that is executable, that people can get behind. I think it also has to be part of the larger discussion of how does this impact everything else, right? Because we, we got roads, we've got public safety, we get school. There's all these things and I think we need to have this as part of the, the big plan. I didn't expect that we will have an answer today. No way.
Yep.
But I think what we should do, I, I do agree that we need to have a smaller working committee to start to flush out. One of the things that I'm unclear on is, is process. And what the, what steps? You know, we, we talked about funding. We need a location. We need all this. What order do those things happen when you're starting at ground zero? I do think it might be something where we can pull together a, a small working group. I know that you should probably, Colin, sit with both the, the police chief and fire chief and start to, to see where they are in, in this and, and what they would advocate with both of the chiefs. They live in town. So they, they have a finger on the pulse and they know kind of what's, what's going on. I, I'd love to see, starting there, I think we also need to, we might have to have different committees, right? There's, there's going to be the, the committee that figures out what's the vision and what we're going to do. We may have another committee that says, how do we get the money? And, and think about that portion of it. So we might need to do a little divide and conquer on it.
Right.
Or I'd like to go to the state. I'd like to, you know, we know that Senator Kennedy is working on an MSBA-like program for public safety. That may or may never come to fruition, but I want to see what options we have there. I want to talk to, you know, Representative Trahan's office and find out what's at the federal level.
Sure.
For these things, we, it's, it's a bit, it's a lot of money. And we owe it to the, to the residents to see how creative we can get on design, how we can get creative on funding for this. So I, I, we might need to have different groups that are looking at some of these things. You got to be involved in all of them.
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
No, please go.
So we, we may get down that path or you have to have multiple committees and, and do that. But I, I think the first step is to have one committee.
Exactly.
And, you know, like you said, and, and I think from what I've heard, the town manager, fire chief, police chief, you're, you're pointing.
Schneider.
Schneider.
He said he wanted to be part of that.
And I would love to be a part of it.
And, and that's kind of where I was going is I'm, I'm thinking,
Yep.
If, if just the five of you started with something to say, and even if it's just a matter of flushing out what the questions are and, and where the decisions need to be made. I, that would be helpful to me, I know, because I'm sitting there saying.
Would be helpful for all of us because we, nobody has all the answers, even close to all the answers. And we really haven't started, we haven't really looked at it in, what, two to three years now. So, and we've created a, you know, we think there might be another option. And we, we thought there might be, we looked at different fire departments that had built aluminum buildings. But then, you know, we just had to focus on the schools.
Sure.
You know, so I, I would agree. And if everybody else does.
Colin's chomping at the bit.
Just a couple of points. I would just refrain from using the word committee. I think if this board designated two members to work with my office, that we don't have to worry about, not that we would hide any information, we don't have to worry about coordinating 48 hours in advance.
Working group, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. The only thing I do, I do think before that working group can be effective. I do think the board needs, I think that there are so many variables if the board isn't aligned on what the priority is. I can put together a whole host of options, but I think the most efficient approach would be, and I talked to the fire chief, we, the fire chief and the police chief, I have standing meetings with them every two weeks. And every week, we, every, every time we meet, we talk about, you know, what are we going to put on the capital request this year? What should we hold off? And I think until these conversations are flushed out, it's difficult. And certainly I will not sell short the fact that our fire, our police department is also at capacity. I think really, you know, the critical thing here is the fire department is, is in an occupational safety issue. I do think, well, I don't think it has to be tonight, but I think perhaps hopefully on the 18th or maybe your first meeting in December, I think it will be important for this board to definitively decide what the priority is because I think there are too many variables if we're going to chase down possible combined building, possible separate building, possible separate building in the same place. I just don't, I think that we'll keep spinning our wheels and not land at anything productive in the timeframe that we need to be. So we don't need a decision tonight, but I would just advise that before we set the, this working group out with a goal, I think the working group needs to understand what the goal is. And I think a big part of that, unfortunately, as much as I, I'm sure none of you want to make a decision, there needs to be a decision collectively about what the priority is.
Can I, so I understand where you're coming from and, and that you need some guidance from us. What I would like to understand is, can you work with the police chief and the fire chief? And have that discussion and give us a recommendation? Because here's the thing, right? If, if both the police chief and fire, if the three of you sit there and say, look, I know that we don't have the money for it, but for these 10 reasons, here's why you need to do a combined building. That's going to carry weight with me rather than just saying, we can't afford it. I'm wondering if you could just have one of those discussions with them and, and come back to us and say, look, we're, we're, we looked at all these things. Here's what our preference is and here's why. Because I don't have enough information to sit there and say, you know what? You got to pick one, go with fire right now because it's occupational. I don't feel comfortable doing that because I don't have enough information. Same thing with saying, look, I know that there would be economies of scale by having a combined building. I don't know. Same thing with saying, look, I know that there would be economies of scale by having a combined building. I don't know where the money is going to come from. But I, I don't, I don't have enough information to say no and, and put a shutdown on that. I'm, I'm looking for a little bit more information. You know, we've always said we have professionals who do this for their job. This is what, I want, I want that feedback before we sit there and say, give you that guidance. I'd like it to be, help us understand the complete picture and what the recommendations might be. So Mr. Chair, you were chomping at the bit too.
So, I mean, we, we've gone through this.
Yeah.
You know, the public safety building committee. I mean, of course, everybody wants to do building, right? And they, they will state all the reasons. And, you know, the thing is, is, you know, the fire department, they, they live in their building, right? And we do know it's a crisis situation and we do know, we do know that the fire chief said it. I think we've all heard it before. We know. The police station. The, 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 the police officers work out of their cars. It's not an occupational hazard with what they have today. And nobody's been able to, I've, I've sat through meetings, nobody's been able to articulate it's, it's an occupational hazard to be in that building. They don't like the building. They think there's problems that, that need to be fixed, but it's not an occupational hazard.
Yep.
So to me, it's pretty clear. We can ask Colin to go back and do it again. We've done it multiple times.
I have a new chief.
Well, he was part of the discussion also. But yeah, I know I'm not going to convince you otherwise and it's probably the right thing to do. So I guess without further ado.
No, but well, let me ask you, because I'm just sitting there saying it, it's been six years, right? Since, since we really had, 2018, right?
That was the last. He said 2014 and 2018.
Right. But I'm just saying, the last time we touched, it was six years ago. We've got some, things are different, right? It, if, if it is that way, then I think it should be a short discussion, right?
Cause it just happened again.
Yeah.
It was 2014, it was 2018.
Yep.
But it just happened again.
Yep.
And it was pretty, I thought the Tectron report was pretty clear. Also which, which way it should go if you're going to pick one.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
So Colin, are you seeking, if this was best case scenario, a ranked prioritization between the three options of standalone fire, standalone PD or combined building? Is that the, like, is that what you're seeking for direction?
I think my, my perspective is that if, if I ask the fire chief and the police chief what their preferences are, both of them are going to say to get them a new building. I think the police department will say that easiest way to do that is through a combined building. Financially though, I'm confident in saying it's not feasible under our current, there are all kinds of options that Mr. Al just pointed out that may eventually come online. My, my perspective is that the committee will be ineffective unless it knows what it's working toward. And so I, I guess what I'm really looking for is I will sit here and be the first to say that we need a combined public safety building in a perfect world.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we are in a world where it is not perfect. And so my, my recommendation is that these have to be achieved in a standalone option. And based on the, both the Tecton report, but most, I think powerfully, the La Valley Brenzinger report, the immediate need is for a fire station. I'm confident in saying that Wes Russell obviously agrees with that perspective. And I'm, I'm happy to talk to Sean Woods about it again. I think I will end up in the same position where he believes, as he should for his department, that the most effective way to get a new police station is through a combined public safety building. I just don't think that I can in good conscience with our finances recommend that we do that. So I guess what I'm looking for is not tonight again, but before the committee sets out with a goal, clarity from the board, what the goal is.
The reason that I asked, thank you. The reason that I asked that is because going back to my first question, which was what are the benefits of the combined building? I think, and maybe this is also sort of what you're thinking, Mr. Chair, but like, do the two chiefs see the value of the combined building to be exponentially greater than getting one building and then knowing that at some point down the road, they will get their building? Like if each of the chiefs thought that the other person was going to get a building first, would they actually advocate for a shared building because of their own? Think that that would expedite their getting a new building or would they advocate for that because these strategic combinations and facilities and synergies were so great for them? The, the reason I ask this is because potentially the, I mean, it's not really a compromise, but like maybe the vision of having them on the same parcel gets us closer to that vision without necessarily having the combined building physically. And so I assume that that would help you to know if that's, like, if it matters to us that they're in the same location, if they're co-located.
What is abundantly, the, the biggest advantage to the combined building is the cost.
Yeah.
Undoubtedly. And I think that both chiefs, you know, I know Chief Howe has said that in our committee meetings and Chief Russell certainly has. I am comfortable saying that neither of them feels that the combined building would enhance their operations.
Okay. That's helpful.
But there are some advantages. Mr. Cohen pointed out the shared training room. Also what came up in the conversations from both chiefs was if you are in the same building and something catastrophic happens to the building, now both are offline. So what, and I will confirm with Chief Woods, now that he's new in the role. But at no point during our conversation about the public safety building was the discussion from an operations perspective, it has to be in combined building. It was realizing the economies of scale and the financial benefit.
That's helpful because then it doesn't sound like the vision needs to be that they're on the combined parcel because it isn't like this huge operational benefit to be in community with other public safety. You know.
There's pros and cons of both is really what it ended up being.
I feel no closer to giving you direction.
Well, and, and here's the other thing.
Why you know where we're headed.
Here's, here's the other thing. Both chiefs understand that coming to us and saying, we need this and here's, here's the money. That isn't going to get it done. Right? It's got to go to the town. And so ultimately, whatever we pull together, we need to make sure that the town is on board with this because that's where the money's coming from. So I think both chiefs understand that. And if they sit there and say, yeah, you know, we need a, a combined building on this and but if, we can't go to the town asking for $60 million. The answer is no. Right? So I think we have to come up with a way and I, I just think there has been a little bit of time. There's been a lot of things that have changed in the economy. There's been a lot of things that have changed in, you know, perhaps different people in different roles. I do think we're at the point where we say we, we have a small working group that can start to work through some of these issues. But what direction we decide, I think we're leaning towards, you know, one, I just don't know that with the information that we've got, whether that's complete enough. And maybe if you can just fill in those gaps, I would feel a lot more comfortable to say, yes, this is what the, the direction is that we should go and have the working group work with under those parameters.
And just so I make sure I get it right. I know you mentioned wanting a recommendation from both. Is there a specific?
Combine.
Well, it's really a recommendation.
Take them.
Yeah, after working with them.
Working with them.
Okay. But I would love to have them both on the same page, right? If, if they're not on the same page, well, then it's going to be harder for us, right? But if they both look at the problem and sit there and say, look, we, we've got an issue and we need to figure out how we're going to address this over the next, you know, eight, 10 years, all of these issues. Here's how we think we might be able to do that. If they're on the same page, hell of a lot easier than if we're sitting there saying, all right, I got two groups that are, that are fighting for that pie because guess what? It's not just those two groups. There's other pieces of the pie that other people want. And that's where, that's why I'm saying the town is ultimately going to be deciding on that. We could sit there and say, oh yeah, the town's overwhelmingly on this until they see a price tag. So I, I don't know. It would be great if you could just, if they sit down and say, we had the discussion, we're trying to get some feedback. We'd love to have consensus from them on it, understanding kind of where we are and that we don't have unlimited funds. And then I think at that point, we should also figure out whether that working group is just the, the two of you and, and those two and Colin, or is there anybody else involved?
Right.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, what we were kind of proposing with, with a small working group was a very short, limited timeframe.
Yep.
And then after that coming back and it probably would be increasing it or creating another committee or something. But hopefully that would give us more direction, a lot more input, but in a very condensed timeframe. And then come back with suggestions. And then of course the board has to decide at that point how we want to move it forward.
So we would also, coming out of that, we would have to give that working group a scope and a timeline, right? Sit there and say, here's what your charge is and here's when, here's the timeframe to go and get that done. Cause some of these committees, you know, they have, it's very broad and it's really hard to rein it in. I think we would just have to say, look, we know, you're not going to boil the ocean, just.
My thought process is two to three months to tell you where we're at. We might not even have a recommendation at that point, but it's just to show exactly where we're at. And, you know, hopefully we would have a recommendation. I, and I think we could work with Colin enough to know that usually we can get to where we want to get to, or at least give a lot of options. So everybody else can, so collectively we can make the decision.
So what I'm hearing is that maybe a little bit more work before our November 18th. If you can talk process, talk to the chiefs and see what their thoughts are on any of these. But we should be pretty close to being able to come up with a scope and a timeline for that working group. Give you an answer to say, you know, we've listened to some folks and here's, here's where we'd like you to start. Plan A is do this. Plan B is this. Is that? How's everybody feel about that?
Yeah. You do that. Just so you know, it is on the, the schedule, but I will, will not be here on the 18th, but I'll, I'll let you.
So let me know what you, because.
Well, you know which way, I've already stated which way.
Yeah. No.
I can do it again.
No, but you, and nothing will change if we assign you to that group.
Absolutely.
Is that, is that okay for everybody?
Bye. Yeah.
Okay. So we'll, we'll get this on for the 18th.
Perfect.
We'll look to nail that down and we'll get a little bit more info. And if you can give us a recommendation, that would be outstanding. I know that that might be a, a tall task.
It's like the surplus episode of the office. Like they have money to spend and half of the office wants chairs and the other half wants a copier and they can't agree. And so instead, Michael, the manager is going to take a portion of that and get a bonus if they don't decide. And so he thinks that, right. So he thinks he's so smart because he's like, oh, they're never going to align. And so he puts them in a room and then they come out and they're like, yep, we've made a decision. We're going to do this. And so it's just, I, I don't know. I kind of think, put the chiefs in a room and say, you get nothing or you decide which one you get.
I like it.
They'll make a decision.
Excellent. All right. So we don't, we don't have any motion at this point, nothing to do. It sounds like we've got a little bit of marching orders and we will make some decisions on the 18th.
Deal.
Sold.
Okay.
All right. Amend charge, commission on disability, number of members. Oh, I'm sorry.
We can go back.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I skipped way. The big ones.
Small item.
Five F.
Contract about the.
No, I see all this time and that's. Well, no, I started writing down and I went down a little bit.
Add a contract now until he decides.
Contract ratification, chief of police.
Thank you. As sport member to prove the three-year employment agreement with Sean Woods for his new role as chief of police during their executive session meeting on October 21st. That contract was effective October 17th and is valid for three years. The contract mirrors the contract of former chief of police, Richard Howe, with the following notable differences. The starting salary for Chief Woods will be 165, 500, effective immediately for the remainder of fiscal year 25. It includes two built-in 3% raises in years two and years three. Longevity, it formalizes an amendment that was approved for all non-union employees back in 2023, which provided longevity payments that matched the mid-managers contract. Education, the new agreement codifies that the chief will be entitled to the same educational incentives that other sworn officers are entitled to. In the case of Chief Woods, this represents an annual incentive of $13,000 for having a master's degree. Because this was approved in executive session, the select board is required under the open meeting law to ratify that approval in a public meeting.
Questions? I will entertain a motion then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the select board ratify the employment agreement with chief of police. Sean Woods has presented.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 400. We're still, are we planning on the 18th to do the?
Yes.
Okay. For the ceremony. We're going to. Excellent. Discuss signatures on select board issued licenses.
Thank you. As you are all, except maybe Jackie hasn't gone through this fun yet.
Nope, I haven't.
Every year when Jackie Schnackert asks you to approve your hundreds of local licenses and liquor licenses, she then hands you a massive stack of paper licenses that each one of you painstakingly signs and then she makes sure has enough signatures. It takes a lot of coordination and every single year when we do this, one or two of you remarks, is this really necessary? So we finally remembered to give you some options. So you have a few. The simplest is that you make no change and we'll continue to make you sign every single license. You could assign the role of the signatory to the, to the select board chair or the select board clerk. Or you could assign it to the town manager if you wanted to punish me. Alternatively, you could just decide that there's not going to be any signatures. It's a cosmetic thing. In fact, we recently switched all of our licenses to our online platform. We didn't use it this year to generate the actual licenses, but we could. And if nobody is signing it, it'd make it even easier. If you go into a restaurant in any of our neighboring communities, I don't believe Chelmsford has signatures on it. Drake, it definitely doesn't have signatures on it. Many of them will just reference per voter, the select board at a date. The only legally binding thing that proves you did it is the meeting minutes. So I defer to you all.
So moved.
All the above, he says. I see lateral, no, no signature.
No signature. I'll just go ahead.
Well, I'll open up for discussion.
I don't, if, if we don't need to sign that, why are we, it doesn't, there's no benefit to signing it. And for Jackie hasn't gone through this, I mean, it's, we're, we're here for like 15, 20 minutes. It's a stack like this and she's got like, I don't know, four different stacks of different things that we have to sign and, and I didn't realize that we never really had to sign it. There's already other, other towns don't sign it. There's no benefit to doing it. We, we're going to vote on it. So.
Still have to vote on it.
Absolutely.
There's really no benefit? There's no reason why you have to sign it?
I mean, it, it looks nice, I guess.
It's cool.
But no, you're.
There is no, yes, there is no reason.
Your signature, not to diminish your signature.
There are licenses that get posted physically at locations that have received these licenses.
Correct.
Have you ever looked at them?
No.
I can tell you can't, you can't read my signatures.
Well, yeah, I was going to say that's a, that's a, that's a thing that the whole. Going in an establishment. I don't look, but.
Well, I look, they're, they're there.
Twice this week, I have been in a place in town and seen my own signature on the wall and been like, did I sign that? And so, no, I mean, I guess this means nothing to me.
So you don't know.
No, I guess not.
That or such.
It's all I had, but.
So I'm hearing that there's no value in that we should do it without signatures. Do we, can I, can I get a motion to allow the licenses to go out with no signatures? Moving forward.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that the select board members do not need to sign the licenses which include common vehicular entertainment, class one, two, three, vehicle sales as well as liquor licenses.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries 400. You're, you're welcome, Jackie. Thank you. I, I sit there and go, this falls into that category of we've done it that way. Oh, for so long, there's no value in it. Not needed.
You will still need to sign the LLA forms Jackie sends to the ABCC, but that's far and few between.
It's fine. And if some business for some reason felt so strongly about wanting it on, I'm sure, like we would entertain that. Like I, I don't think that would be a big deal if they were like, I'd really love to have an official thing on the wall and why not?
I can tell you they don't want my signature. Like it's a, what is that? All right. Accept donation from Lowell 5 and off, oh jeez, I keep going ahead. Amend charge, commission on disability. The number of members. My, my computer restarted, so my order is a little bit off on the.
I'll take this. The commission on disability voted at their October 20.
The Commission on Disability voted at their October 21st meeting to recommend the select board increasing their membership from five to seven. This amendment to the charge is before the board, because the commission has recognized a need to get more community input from residents living with a disability of various ages and lived experiences, still while maintaining the tenure on the commission. The commission has done an amazing job over the past year, reaching out to the Center for Active Living and the school department to get a broader community perspective. The COD has a member that attends the Center for Active Living monthly meetings, as well an associate member who is a student at Tingsborough High School. So by increasing the number of members, the commission hopes to attract more members who identify of having a disability to help foster more accessible Tingsborough. So currently, the commission is made up of five members, consisting of three who are people with disabilities, one member who has a family member living with a disability, and one elected or portent official. Mass General Law section, um, chapter 40, section 8J requires that a majority of members shall consist of people with disabilities. That section of law, which the town me adopted, allows the commission to consist up to seven members. So the intent of the change to, um, to have two new members with disabilities.
Questions?
Um, I don't remember having to increase before, so, uh, select board makes the decision at town meeting?
Town meeting accepted the section of state law which formed a commission on disability. At the next meeting, we presented a charge to you which outlined the membership.
Okay.
At the time, it was new, and so we didn't, we didn't know that we'd be able to fill the seven. Obviously, through the things Kat mentioned, we could fill it now, so it would need you to amend the charge.
Well, I, I think the more people that are willing to do that, um, they've done some great work, and just getting a few more opinions in there, I think would be, would be great for the, for, for the commission and for the town.
Well, especially if you're getting two new members with disabilities, the additional perspective in there is fantastic.
I'm curious, based on that second paragraph, are we to understand that the associate member who's the student would then have the opportunity to become a full member? I can see you're already shaking your head. Go ahead.
Because of her age.
Oh, okay. I wasn't clear if these two spots that were opening up, like, have already been sort of filled and then will be official, but it sounds like they don't have people to fill those roles just yet.
No, I think my intent in that paragraph is really demonstrate that we are, they're making a concerted effort to really get more community, um, perspective, um, and involvement on these issues. I think when we did, when we, um, posted the vacancy of for the associate member position, and we did a sort of an intentional outreach to the schools, we did, uh, receive a lot of interest from, from members of the public that are, you know, what, we really targeted the school, so it was kind of, and that was the first person that applied, so it was advantageous, but we have, I have numerous contacts that were, are interested that I think would, um, be great contribution, so.
Great, okay. I'm Martha Merrier.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I move the select board amend the commission on disability charge by increasing their membership from five to seven.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, carries 400. Nah. Five, aye. Accept donation from Lowell Five and authorize expenditure. I like getting money and.
Yes, I understand the enthusiasm. Earlier this summer, the town was notified by Lowell Five that they had made a four-year commitment totaling $20,000 over the four years to support the work we're doing at the former Tingsborough Country Club to establish a well-rounded recreational program. The structure of the donation calls for annual gifts of $5,000, the first payment of which we received late this summer. Because this is a donation technically to the select board, you must formally accept it. And since we're looking to immediately spend that money on the work that's already happening, I've also included in the motion to accept a vote for an authorization to expend that $5,000. The way that donations work, select board has a donations account. Money goes in by a vote of you all, and if it's not expended by the select board, it's able to carry over. Because this is for a specific purpose, you couldn't use it for anything else, but, um, I don't have unilateral authority to spend from that account, only you do. So if you approve it tonight, this $5,000 will be spent first thing tomorrow morning on work that we've already begun over there.
Excellent. And what is that specifically? Which part is this going to? Just want to make sure that Lowell Five is, this money's being spent for what they wanted it for.
Yeah, it'll be toward the contract that we have over there, so that we're spending less of the CPC money.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
They will get to put a sign, they've sent us a proof already, they'll put a small sign in front of the clubhouse that says, Lowell Five, a proud partner of Tingsborough Parks and Recreation.
Perfect.
I think this is lovely and very generous. The phrase well-rounded recreational program, are there any sort of restrictions to that? They're not going to like insert themselves and demand that we do XYZ, whatever, recreation. It's, they're donating it in good faith that.
Correct.
Department.
In fact, I'm, my plan for the remaining 15 is to put that $5,000 a year towards some of the maintenance costs over there, since we will have likely built out all of the amenities by then.
Excellent. Well, I, I'm very appreciative to Lowell Five for, yeah, the, the generous donation and, um, I would absolutely entertain a motion to accept the donation.
Excellent. Mr. Chair, I move the select board accept the $5,000 donation from Lowell Five for the Sherburne Ave Recreation Project, and authorize the town manager to expend that same amount for the same purpose.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, carries 400. Select board report. Select person, Cohen, did you want to start?
Well, tomorrow's election day, please, uh, go out and vote, uh, start out with. You know, the Sustainability Committee in the library, uh, and the Rotary Club put on a repair cafe this past Saturday, which was um, very successful, um, fixed 40 different items, uh, so instead of going in the trash, we fixed it, uh, you know, for the, uh, for the residents. Um, we'll probably have another one, and we're, we're going to try to have, their plan is to try to have two a year, so, you know, just look out for the next one. And if you have anything, instead of throwing it away, and you think somebody might be able to fix it, uh, just bring it in. That's it.
Thank you. Select person, Gilfus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's lovely. I love that the repair cafe exists. Um, yeah, tomorrow, election day, hope that everyone who is registered gets out to vote. I hope that everyone behaves and is nice and kind to each other, um, and is patient if there are lines. I think that's a beautiful thing. I think we're, we're seeing huge turnout already, so really excited about that. I'll see you at Precinct Four if you're voting tomorrow. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Stein.
Um, I have two things, actually. One, dealing with the election indirectly, um, for the, the folks that volunteered to be, um, poll workers, we had done some training, um, last Friday and Saturday um, with the town clerk. And I was so impressed with that training. I'm, I'm wondering if we could, um, encourage her to put an abbreviated version of that training on our website, because it really, um, is, is a, is a great tool for showing what happens from when you register to when you vote, to when your vote gets counted, and all the steps that are involved in that. I think that's really important information for the townspeople to have. It, it, it sort of reiterates all the security and checks and whatnot that go into the voting process. Um, secondly, um, I'm very impressed by, by, um, town manager Loizelle's Citizens Academy and, and the folks that graduate from that. And, and similarly, I wonder, this is going to be putting a lot on your shoulders, Colin, if you couldn't build some type of a curriculum that we could pass to the schools, where in their civics classes, they could actually have a section about town government and how town governments work and operate. I think that would be so valuable for people to learn. And it's that, you know, if they don't learn it in school, you know, other than enrolling in your class, where would they, would they learn that stuff?
Good point.
So I think that would be, um, that would be a, a benefit to the entire town.
Thank you. Comes up with the best ideas.
It's for Colin to do, yeah.
Two great ideas. So there's an election tomorrow? Huh, something like that. Um, yes, no, I, I think that, um, I, I'm appreciative to the poll workers, some of whom are here. Um, I, I appreciate your patience, the long hours. We are afforded a great ability to be able to vote. Um, so, uh, I certainly hope that everybody takes advantage of it. Colin outlined it very well. These are your neighbors, so, uh, be nice to everybody. Um, at the end of the day, uh, there's a lot of people who think that this is life and death, and, and while the election is important, I do think that throughout our history, there have been difficult elections. Um, there have been things that, that have been going on, um, that were far more serious than this. You know, I think back to the Civil War and all that stuff. Everything is still going to be good, right? It will be fine. Everybody has one vote, all citizens. One, one person, one vote. Um, so that's our, that's our way of doing it. Uh, be part of it. But at the end of the day, I, I know I got to go to work on, on Wednesday, no matter what. I, I've been told, so. But, uh, be nice, definitely go out and vote, and, um, our next meeting is November 18th, as we've talked about. And then we've got another one coming up on December 2nd. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn our meeting. Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, it carries 400. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.